Next, we have our regular city council meeting. So before we do that, maybe it's for the sake of those who are participating and watching this, this, it appears that we're having some technical difficulties. What does it look like on the Channel 11 side, Mr. Brady?
You look great. You're just frozen.
Okay.
So let me, hold on, just give me a second here. Let me talk to Glenn and see if we need to restart the session. Just give me just a second.
Yeah, maybe before we start, we log off and log back in and see if we can kind of reboot the technology.
I think an update for Zoom came out, so I don't know if everybody's updated their Zoom application, but that could be causing a lot of difficulties. Everybody doesn't update their application.
Why don't we just try that? Why don't we just have them go exit out and come back in and try it? See what it looks like? Mayor, I think Glenn's gonna, he's going to end the meeting. And then if you'll, just give him a chance to do that and then try to come back in and let, the internet's up, everything looks fine, but let's, he's gonna end the meeting on his side. And then will you all just kind of re-log in if you could give him just a couple of minutes or give him a half a second here and then come back into the meeting, please?
Okay, so we're gonna, Glenn's gonna terminate the meeting and then we should then immediately re-enter the Zoom information reboot.
Well, everybody wave. It looks like you may be unfrozen now. Mayor, okay. Councilman Duff? Oh, okay. Hold on, that made of, Councilman Whitaker, are you, can you just lift a hand or something, Councilman Whitaker? Okay, that works. I think we're there, Mayor. I think we, you've been defrosted. I think you're back live again.
Okay. I can tell you on my end, I'm still seeing a lot of frost.
Okay. Then, okay, we'll end the meeting and come back in. It looks better on this side. So we'll just end the meeting and then come back in after he's concluded the meeting.
Okay, great. We'll all sign off and sign back on. See you in a few, see you in a minute.
Looking good, Mayor. Do you see everybody?
Yes.
We're waiting for...
Mr. Freeman on?
I don't see him yet. He was.
Yeah.
Here he comes. All right. Mayor, we're ready to review the agenda. That's where we're, that's our next item.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, so let me welcome everyone back. This is the Mesa City Council Study Session for the morning of Thursday, April the 30th. The first item on the agenda for all of our council is present. I see them visually on the Zoom screen. As was indicated, the first item on the agenda for this meeting is to review and discuss items on the agenda for Monday, May the 4th meeting. So please refer to that agenda.
Mayor, Councilman Thompson, did we, did I answer your question? Do you, does it make sense? This has, this is the city's amenities related to utilities and IT fiber that wouldn't be covered by the state or the region. Does that make sense to you?
Well, it does, I guess, for the two, the 2 million, but the 11.5 seems kind of steep for utility structures. I was just, you know, and as I read through the, and this is for five, sorry, 5B. It's throwing, the verbiage is throwing me off because it's talking about the bridge structure. And that should be A dot property, so we wouldn't be funding that.
Correct.
Like utility crossings and stuff. So I'm trying to, in my mind, I'm trying to wrap my head around, what's the 11.5 for? What are we doing with the structure itself?
Okay. We can clarify, but I believe that the city's cost is the 2.7 million.
Okay.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
This is RJ Zeter.
Oh, go RJ, please. Thank you.
There we go. So Mayor, Councilmember Thompson, there's two pieces to this agreement. The first piece is the cost for the construction of the bridge at Ellsworth. So you may recall that's under Greensworth and appropriation added to the state budget for $6.5 million. That $6.5 million was actually paid to the city of Mesa. You have to turn around and move back A dot for that portion of the bridge. 5 million is money that is coming from MAG that was originally dedicated to Mesa arterial streets that we've moved over to the bridge. So Mesa agreed, along with Queen Creek, to assist in the bridge costs, but of the 11.5 million, there's no cash or hard dollars that Mesa is out of pocket for. So it's, it's an half million that was included in the state budget, plus $5 million in MAG money that will go towards the bridge. Then in addition to that is the total of 2.7, and that's for the enhancements of char utility sleeves, intelligent transportation system information, as well as a piece of Williamsfield between State Route 24 and Crimson Road. Of the 2.7, we are also receiving some money from MAG to go towards that. So the city's net out of pocket, if you want to call it that, is just over $2.2 million. The rest of the funds are either State of Arizona or MAG.
Okay, that's perfect. That works. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Counsel, other questions on Monday's agenda? Yes, Jen?
I had a question on the budget. What item is that? On item 8A, on the proposed adoption of the budget for 2021. Does this take into account the ordinance that we passed, the enterprise fund and having restricted monies transferred to public safety? Is that allocated in this new budget?
Mayor, Councilman Duff, it is. And matter of fact, we have a presentation, it's the last presentation of today, that we'll go over some more detail about this item and the forecast of the budget looking forward. So we can, the answer to that is yes, and we can show you the specifics in the numbers for the budget for next year as well and the forecast. And Candace and Brian are here to make that presentation, and I think it's the last presentation you'll get today.
Great, thank you.
Okay, Counsel, any other questions or any information you'd like from Monday's agenda?
Mayor, can I just point out on the fees and charges, one of the items that I know we've gone to the committee with, and, but it may be interesting for the community to be aware of too, is that in item 5G, we are eliminating all overdue book fines at the library. So as soon as we get that library open and we start checking books out again, we'll, that'll be an item that'll be in place that we've eliminated the overdue library fines.
Thank you. I know Mr. Brady was asking about that a month or two ago. So amnesty for everyone going back to the library when the doors are open. All right. Thank you. Counsel, any other questions regarding Monday's agenda? All right, so unless something changes, there'll be nothing off of the consent agenda for Monday, May the 4th. Okay, thanks. Moving on then, the next item on our agenda for this meeting is item 2A. That is to hear a presentation, discuss and provide direction on proposed funding allocations of $1,130,033 in emergency solutions grant slash coronavirus, also known as ESG slash CV funds, to provide services to prevent and respond to the spread of infectious diseases for homelessness and to prevent homelessness in Mesa due to COVID-19. The proposal are recommended based on local community assessment information as well as HUD issued guidance policies. I see Ms. Lewis is keyed up and ready to go. Is that who's going to be presenting on this, Mr. Brady?
I think Natalie's here to answer questions. I'm not sure she has something to say, but Michelle's here to give the presentation.
I'm sorry, Michelle, you are on a different screen. So I saw the presentation notes and I think, okay, so we'll turn the time over then to our Housing Director, Michelle, to present on this item.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Mayor Giles, City Council.
Morning.
Last week, I presented to you, and the council approved the funding recommendations for the city's annual allocation of federal community development block grant, home and emergency solutions grant funding. Today, I will be providing an overview of additional ESG funds that we refer to as ESG CV for COVID, which we will be receiving through the Coronavirus Act that was signed into law on March 27th. The purpose of the ESG COVID funding is to prevent, prepare for, and respond to coronavirus disease to individuals and families who are currently homeless, receiving homelessness assistance, or are at risk of becoming homeless. Stimulus dollars must be allocated to programs and services to ensure the most vulnerable population has immediate access to housing, facilities for handwashing, medical treatment, and safe places to quarantine. Eligible uses of ESG CV funds include providing emergency rent and utility payments, hotel vouchers, emergency shelter, street outreach, transportation for medical care, and supplies. Funds will assist providers with the costs above and beyond the budgeted dollars to specifically address the community impact of the virus. As an immediate response to COVID-19, the city had created Mesa Cares to assist in surveying residents and nonprofit organizations in the community to determine the most critical needs. As a result, housing, food, and rental assistance were identified, which are consistent with HUD's highest need categories for funding. The city of Mesa anticipates receiving approximately $2.26 million in ESG CV funds, which will be allocated from HUD in two separate awards. The first allocation of $1,130,033 is expected to be awarded within 30 days of enactment of the CARES Act, with the remainder dispersed within 90 days of that date. Requests for applications for eligible activities to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the spread of COVID-19 were made available to nonprofit providers who assist homelessness. Criteria for funding must be specific to COVID-related activities focusing on at-risk population and homeless prevention for Mesa-based residents. There were three specific categories for funding, which were homeless prevention, rapid rehousing, and emergency shelter, and I'll go over a little bit of what each one of those categories are. Homeless prevention includes providing housing opportunities and supportive services to prevent or reduce the number of persons becoming homeless. This includes rental assistance necessary to prevent an individual from moving into an emergency shelter or becoming homeless. Rapid rehousing provides housing and stabilization services, including short-term, or which we refer to as 90 to 120 days, and medium-term rental assistance, up to 24 months, to assist homeless individuals or families who are sheltered, to move quickly as possible into permanent, stable housing. Emergency shelter provides the basic essential services to provide emergency housing, which is 30 to 90 days, for homeless individuals and families, which includes outreach, engagement, case management, and comprehensive coordinated services. The city received 10 applications for a total request of 1.2 million, 1.27 million, with funding available at 1.017030. And you can see on the screen above, for homeless prevention, we had one application for 112,820. For rapid rehousing, we had two applications totaling 643,000, and emergency shelter for seven applications of just over 1.5 million.
Excuse me, Michelle, Mr. Thompson has a question.
Michelle, on the, on the rapid rehousing, are there any wraparound services that are provided to those that are, that are going into rapid rehousing? Because, you know, this is a conversation that came up several years ago when House of Refuge, funding was cut at House of Refuge, where they went from, from the, from the, they went into the rapid rehousing piece, and what they were forgetting was that a lot of people that were, that were going into rapid rehousing that were homeless, were homeless for a reason. And that was because a lot of times they don't know how to manage their finances. You have a lot of people that are coming, that are, that don't know how to write checks, or don't know how to, to budget funds and so forth. So are there services that are also being provided to those that are going into rapid rehousing so that we can ensure that they're not going to be homeless yet again? So I just want to make sure that, you know, that we're, that the folks that are, that are going into rapid rehousing are taken care of and they have the services necessary to survive and be able to, you know, support themselves.
Yes, very good question. Mayor Giles, Councilmember Thompson, there's several wraparound services. So sometimes homeless individuals suffer from substance abuse or some type of illness. So they can provide substance abuse, counseling, employment, job prep, seeking medical if they have medical issues. They also provide counseling services, as well as reeducating individuals how to manage their finances, and then credit counseling. So it is really a holistic approach, rather than just taking someone off the streets or from emergency shelter and expecting them to be successful in permanent housing.
Okay, so for, for the two that apply for the rapid rehousing, do we, does a navigator get teamed up with those individuals to kind of guide them and help them, you know, help navigate for them, to help them become successful? Is that, is that what's happening?
Yes, Mayor Giles, Councilmember Thompson, that is correct. So one of the proposals did have resources for a navigator as well as, that's, yes. Yes, this one was specific to navigator services.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Michelle. Mr. Luna has a question as well.
Thank you, Michelle, for that presentation. I was wondering if you are able to tell us what agencies applied for these funds?
Absolutely. Mayor Giles, Councilmember Luna, we had A New Leaf applying for emergency shelter, Central Arizona Shelter CAS for emergency shelter, Child Crisis Arizona, also emergency, Chicanos-Porla Causa, emergency shelter, Chrisless Shelter, which is domestic violence but also considered emergency shelter, Community Bridges for rapid rehousing, House of Refuge for food boxes, which unfortunately is not eligible through this program, Mesa United Way for emergency shelter, Save the Family for rapid rehousing, and Save the Family for homeless prevention.
So, Michelle, can you tell us what agencies will be funded once council approves these?
Yes, so as I go through my presentation today, I'm providing a high level of the different buckets of money that we've allocated to those different services, and then we'll be working with those specific agencies on their proposals. But the ones that I can tell you that we're going to be recommending for funding are A New Leaf, Mesa United Way, both for emergency shelter, Community Bridges, and Save the Family for rapid rehousing, and Save the Family for homeless prevention.
Great. Okay, thank you so much, Michelle.
You're very welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Duff?
Thank you, Michelle. I have a question. I know I'm getting ahead of myself on, but since we're paused, I noticed on the funding request, there was one for the homeless prevention. I understand that that Save the Family and it's for 112,000. The next slide to which you'll be going to is that a recommended funding of 358,000. And so that's above the request, and I was just wondering, is that going to more capacity to Save the Family, or how is that being allocated? Thank you.
Mayor Giles, Councilmember, so we have different categories. So for the homeless prevention, we are looking at 358,485. And yes, that is in addition to the request that they had. We have prioritized homeless prevention right now, and so that was the additional funding that was put onto that specific category.
So will we be looking for another partner, or that, does that go to expanded funding to Save the Family? How is that treated? Do we go back out? How is that treated when the allocation is larger than the application?
Mayor Giles, members of the council? So these organizations that have been recommended for funding are very strong in the community. And so what we would like to do is discuss proposal with them and see if they have the capacity to absorb the additional funding, because we know that they can implement their programs very quickly and successfully. So that, that would be our first choice, is to talk with them on additional funding.
So it wouldn't be specifically just Save the Family since they're the only organization that applied for homeless prevention funding, but going back to all our partners and asking, how is that handled?
Mayor Giles, members of the council, it would specifically go to Save the Family because these were the only agencies that had applied at this time. We do have a second round of the COVID funding that will be coming, and we will open that up and possibly work with some of these agencies as well to absorb that additional funding.
So Mayor and Councilmember Duff, they were the only ones that applied in that specific category, and it's an area where we identified where we need, our greatest need is. And I'll just, I don't mean to confuse the conversation a little bit, but outside of these HUD dollars, as you know, the council, we've received CARES dollars directly from the federal government, which also includes eligible for homeless sheltering during the times of the pandemic. And we've also approached both our largest nonprofits that work with us and have the capacity to spend money, both New Leaf and Save the Family, to actually go and look at acquiring hotels to continue to increase our capacity to shelter the homeless so we can get them in areas where they can be separated and sheltered during the summer during the pandemic. So the funding that we're getting now from the federal government is giving us this kind of flexibility and is encouraging us to make decisions very quickly. And so we've got to find, we've got to go to our organizations that literally have the capacity and are sophisticated enough and are large enough to move quickly enough to spend the money, because the money does have deadlines to spend. And so in some of these categories where we might have just had one group, we're going to go back to them and say, we need more, and see if they have the capacity to deliver more for us.
Great, that's wonderful. I appreciate that we are putting a lot of emphasis on the homeless prevention because of the pandemic. We certainly will see a number of people who have never been homeless before, possibly getting into that as rents become due month after month and our economy is slow to recover. So I appreciate that emphasis. Thank you.
I appreciate Councilmember Duff's question. So just to make sure that I understand the answer, the difference between the 112,000 and the 358,000 is going to, to the, to individual assistance for homeless prevention? And if I understood you, Mr. Brady, specifically, we're going to be looking at acquiring perhaps a motel or more than one motel downtown to be used for emergency, well, for homeless prevention purposes? And I endorse that. I'm anxious for us to acquire some of those properties that are very problematic in downtown and put them to a better use. But I'm, going forward, I know that, I'm not anxious for the city to, to own and operate those facilities. And so I like the fact that agencies are being funded to do that. But at the same time, as far as the long-term ownership of the property, I think, I just like to discuss that, whether or not the title of those properties ought to be in the name of the agencies or remain in the name of the city, because over time, you know, I'd like the city to retain some control over how those properties are used.
So Mayor, and I apologize, because I knew, as soon as I opened my mouth, I realized I was probably going to confuse everyone. So what you're talking about, Mayor, is very important to talk about. Let's take it outside of this conversation. I just wanted to make point to council is that we're, homeless prevention is a high, high priority for us. So what you're talking about, Mayor, is a completely different program than what Michelle's talking about, in the sense of where the funding is coming from. The funding that she's speaking about for homeless prevention is, has a specific direction. You're speaking, what I interjected probably prematurely was the conversation about the dollars that we have received a direct deposit from. They're not part of these pot of dollars and have actually have more flexibility. But yes, Mayor, everything you just said is something we're, we're having to look at and, from guidance from Treasury about ownership and whether it can be owned by the city, whether it can be owned by the nonprofit. The city has no plans in getting into the homeless prevention operating side of it. We just have to determine, under guidance, whether or not we can own the, we have to own the asset or whether it's the nonprofit. But let me have Michelle answer the question one more time about the homeless prevention under ESG, what that, what types of services that would provide?
Thank you, Mayor Giles, members of the council. I can give you kind of a overview of what they propose to do, and that's to provide emergency subsidy to approximately 16 households for overdue rent, late fees, current utilities and, and any back utilities, as well as stabilizing the existing housing for individuals and families. So that's really what the housing prevention programs are, is to help out individuals who maybe have lost their jobs or just really aren't making as much money as they were, and to prevent them from being homeless, to help them catch up on some of their bills.
Okay, thank you. I see Mr. Freeman has a question.
Hi, Michelle and Chris, are these dollars going to be here for next year as well?
Good question. So Mayor Giles, Councilman Freeman, we get an allocation of ESG every year, so regular ESG funds, not related to COVID. And that was part of the funding recommendations last week. So we got approximately $327,000 for this upcoming fiscal year of 2021. So we will continue to get, in the following year, our regular ESG dollars.
But we don't know that this, these are supplemental dollars, if that's, maybe if we can use that term. So these are dollars that are not part of the normal cycle. They're supplemental, or I'm not sure what the word is, they're in addition to, they're in response to the pandemic. So it's been a, an additional resource that's come to us with the similar names to them, titles, program names. But these are unique because they are off-cycle, and we do believe that they will be one time. And so that's why we're kind of going through this additional process. Now, the notifications, the, how we make decisions on awarding these dollars have been tremendously changed and make you have a flexibility to move quickly. And that's why we're here today, because the idea is these dollars need to be in the community as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Chris and Michelle. I guess my, my question is, is if the dollars, I guess, the amount of dollars are not available for next year for the funding of these programs, how will they proceed for future? So I know that's yet to, to be seen. So thank you, and I'll let you proceed with your presentation.
No problem. Thank you. So these funding recommendations will be coming back to you for final approval at a council meeting in June with the substantial amendment to our action plan. So today is just a presentation to show you the recommended agencies. So, today is just a presentation to show you the recommended agencies, and then we'll be bringing it back for, for final approval. What I did want to highlight is, last week, when I came to you with the recommendations for funding, we outlined all of the different sources that we're utilizing to provide support, and different strategies and programs to address homelessness, as well as homelessness prevention. And so I just wanted to highlight, for our first round of coronavirus funding, which we're calling ESG CV1, is the $1.13 million. And then the round two is that same amount. For fiscal year 2021, our ESG, which is the program that I just spoke about, that we get on an annual basis, $327,000. So that we use specifically for prevention, rapid rehousing, and shelter. So that's the purpose of ESG funds. For fiscal year 2021 home dollars, we're using $900,000 to provide rent and utility assistance, both in the forms of emergency rent and utility, and mortgage payments, as well as what we call our tenant-based rental assistance, which is a little longer, can go up to one year. So that's really our homeless prevention resource for that program. For fiscal year 2021, for our CDBG program, for our public services, $627,000. And all of that is really for outreach, support, navigation, and to support operational services for current homeless shelters. Fiscal year 2021 CDBG, for more of the bricks and mortar type money that we call our non-public services, $1.5 million that we had set aside for regional solutions for homeless support, as well as fiscal year 2021 human services funds, $462,000. Those dollars are going to be used for prevention, shelter, food, and basic needs. So overall, that is a total city support of over $6 million for all those services and programs. And with the funding of $6 million, I just wanted to highlight some really great numbers for our community impact of funding. So for our homeless prevention, which is our emergency rent and utilities, it's estimated that 4,800 individuals or persons and families will be assisted. For rapid rehousing, estimating 200 persons and families, and serving them for six to nine months. For emergency shelter, which is our temporary 90-day shelter, estimating 1,143 individuals, 152 families, and 359 teens and domestic violence, individuals suffering from domestic violence. These are temporarily housed folks. For outreach and crisis, estimated at 4,900 persons assisted. And this includes outreach to the homeless population, as well as crisis for those individuals, such as teens, for suicide prevention, and those that could potentially become homeless. Food and basic needs, estimating 169,000 individuals receiving meals or other services provided, could be basic needs, as well as food boxes. And this is a huge impact in our community, and it's really a collaboration of all the different federal sources and local funding that we have.
Excuse me, Michelle. This is a very impressive slide, and a lot of big numbers. It shows a very, a huge impact on our community with this money. But I, I mean, does it really, is this everything? For example, I think you were talking about coming back in a few months with an additional round of funding that could be allocated to some of these causes. I know we're doing a great deal with our CARES Act money for food, security. Does this slide include, you know, everything that the city is doing, addressing at-risk individuals, and trying to prevent homelessness, you know, including the funding that is yet to be decided?
Mayor, this is, council, it does not, Mayor. As you, as you know, Mayor, and it's a great question, and we'll bring to the council. And I think it's great that Michelle's been able to identify the impacts that are coming from this $6 million. I can tell you, we have in the works right now through our Feeding Mesa program, and as I mentioned, the Mesa CARES homeless sheltering program. This $6 million, we anticipate we'll be spending three or four times this amount with the same kind of, if you'll take the numbers here, we expect that through acquisition of properties, as well as delivering of food, and helping households to make payments on some of their mortgage and utility bills, we'll be expending, you know, three, three or four times more of the $6 million in the near future. We've already started, but that, we'll see that impact coming this summer. We expect to be spending a tremendous amount of resources, and we're just putting all that together, and we'll be bringing that to you. You saw the Feeding Mesa program, and we're going to keep you up to speed on how many meals that's purchasing, and what we're leveraging with city dollars. It's tremendous. And it's a lot of the same people that are seeking utility and rental assistance that are also coming, and we're serving with the food distribution. And that program's just barely, just getting stood up, and it'll have a huge impact. And as I mentioned, the other, another component is providing homeless sheltering. So we're, as I mentioned, we have already engaged with Save the Family and New Leaf, and asked them to come back to us with proposals for, and most likely it'll be like hotel rooms. That seems to be the pattern that many of the large cities that have received the funding, that's the, that's the model that they're using to address homeless in their community. And so we, and they will provide the wraparound services. All these acquisitions are required, we're requiring that the agencies demonstrate to us that they can provide the wraparound services. And there'll be many more programs that we'll be bringing to council. They fall in those categories that we did through the assessment. Food, rental, and utility assistance were identified. Obviously, you're going to hear about small business today, sheltering. So those are, those are the ones that we're focused on right now.
Great. And I guess my point was, this is an impressive slide, but obviously, our obligation with this money is to be very transparent to the community, and to account for it. And so I think a running total on this topic is probably appropriate as we go through the next few months of allocating this funding, so that we can
Okay. Good.
Show the big picture, and people will really get a better idea of the magnitude of the assistance that's going to be offered.
Great idea, Mayor. We'll keep that in mind as we bring it forward.
Mayor Giles, members of the council, I also wanted to add, for, in terms of additional funding, we will be bringing to you fairly soon, our Community Development Block Grant COVID funding, which is also part of the stimulus package. And HUD has relaxed some regulatory requirements as far as the maximum amount of dollars you can use for public services, so we can invest additional funds into these types of services, if identified.
I think that's it, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you very much. This is on our agenda to provide direction. So these are recommendations for funding. Mr. Brady, Mr. Smith, is it appropriate for us to have a motion approving these recommendations?
It's going to come in an amendment?
Yes, yes. If we could get direction, then we'll, we'll maybe have to bring them back specifically, but this gives us direction to move forward with finalizing the agreements with the agencies.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel, is there a motion approving staff recommendation? Thank you. I saw Mr. Luna's hand, followed by Mr. Freeman's. So there's a motion and a second to approve the recommendations that we've just seen. We'll do a roll call vote. I vote aye. Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Whitaker? Thank you. Councilmember Heredia?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Duff?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Luna?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Thompson?
Aye.
Thank you. That motion passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda for this meeting is item 2B. That's to hear a presentation discuss and provide direction on funding recommendations for the fiscal year 2021 Human Services Program.
So Mayor, you recall last week, we had a conversation about human services funding. Council identified that there were some agencies that were being funded, that we could consider moving some of their funding into the Mesa CARES funding, outside of the general fund. And so we wanted to come back with you with a proposal on that.
Thank you, Mayor Giles, members of the council. So we identified funding through the Corona Relief Funds, which is the other pot of money that the city is receiving, the $90 million. And so, not to get you confused with all these different pots of money, but, but one of the eligible activities here is to support food security programs. And so we went through and identified those agencies under human services that we were recommending for funding, reached out to those agencies, and they're absolutely willing to take a portion of funding from the other source. And so, just a recap, last week when I presented to you, these were the organizations that were going to be recommended for funding. And so on the next slide here, identified in kind of the salmon color, those are the three agencies that we were identifying as food service programs, either meals that were going to be home-delivered meals, or Arizona Brain Food for the children with backpacks, so that they have nutritious meals over the weekends, and then United Food Bank for their food box and supplemental distribution. So for United Food Bank, requesting $30,000, ASTRA Aging $30,000, and Arizona Brain Food for $25,000. This is the slide that will identify what we would be funding them through human services, and what portion would be through the Corona Relief Fund, and how that total for each agency. So for United Food Bank, we would be providing $15,000 for human services, and then $15,000 and possibly more money, because it is a food security program. So based on need, we could provide more, which gives a total plus $30,000. The same amount for ASTRA Aging, $15,000 from each one of those sources. Arizona Brain Food, $12 million, I'm sorry, $12,500. I'm so, so much talking about millions here. $12,500, which is a total of $25,000. And then we were able to take the additional dollars that were saved in the human services funds. That was one of the council priorities for the Mesa Promise Program, for tuition assistance for Mesa students, $92,500.
So Mayor and Council, let me explain a little bit about the method here, and why we looked at, why we, why we see the split. We're able to identify these three programs to receive dollars from the Mesa CARES Fund. In most cases, while we show, we just took a half of what they had applied from the general fund, and are showing that here. I think when you, we come back to you in the weeks ahead, you'll see that the amounts that we're actually supporting these groups with will be in the hundreds of thousands, at least for the United Food Bank, and others, that'll be a significant amount of dollars, well beyond what we're showing here. We're just showing that here, that they had made a request to the general fund, the human services fund, for these amounts. And the difference here is, and this is why they're still, you're maybe saying, well, why did you leave anything in here for the general fund? The reason we did is that, obviously, these agencies can provide these services year-round, and they've been doing it for years. The Mesa CARES funds that we receive from the federal government have to be spent by December 31st. And that was emphasized again this week in meetings we had with representatives from Treasury, that it can't just be encumbered, it has to be expended by the end of the fiscal, I'm sorry, of the calendar year. And so what that means is that we have this time to spend the money, provide services, buy equipment. But at the end of that, going into the new year of 2021, there won't be any additional dollars. There won't be, these dollars that we're currently receiving from the federal government will not be available. So we felt like, at least for the next, the remaining half of the fiscal year, we needed to allow them to have some general fund dollars. And that's why you see, why we split it in half. The January date kind of falls in the midpoint of the fiscal year, so it at least gives them some funding to continue services, almost as if they would in a normal year, for the, from January through the end of June. So that's why you see kind of this split. But I can assure you that we are working with all three of these groups right now, to receive funding well above and beyond the number you see in the middle column. But just for the purposes of showing you how we were taking the original amounts recommended in the general fund, and how much we're leaving in the general fund for them, frankly, for funding for their activities after January 1 of 2021. That's what we, that's why we showed that. And we were to take that savings, or that repurposing of dollars, and put it into the Mesa Promise Program. So I hope that helps out a little bit in understanding why we did this.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. I know Mr. Freeman has a question, and then Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Chris, for that explanation. I like this, because it, the platform to deliver food by the United Food Bank, obviously by ASTRA Aging, Arizona Brain Food, and the Mesa Promise, are different platforms to deliver food to different age groups and peoples. So I really appreciate that. And I know that this is just the tip of the iceberg. So I appreciate staff coming back with this in the future, for additional funding for these organizations. I had a long conversation yesterday with the United Food Bank's executive director, Dave Richens, about how, and his needs for food is just exploding. And people in our Mesa area need the food, and how he has the platforms to deliver it. So with that, I thank you, and appreciate all the work's being done.
Kevin?
You know, I would honestly, I would like to see some funding go to the House of Refuge, because they're, the funding that they're looking for, looks like it's helping families transition to self-sufficiency. And I would think that that, as a, as a community, that's what we would want, is, you know, because A, not only is it helping families transition to that self-sufficiency, but as those families transition out of House of Refuge, it also frees up additional space where they can take those families in that are in crisis mode. I don't think $13,000 is too much to ask for, so I would really like to see some additional funding pushed over to House of Refuge. You know, I think, I think they do a tremendous job in our community with families, and getting those families, and they've got, what, like a 90% or 98% success rate, versus the rapid rehousing programs that HUD pushes out. So why would we not want to help fund those, and help those families become self-sufficient again? So, I would like to see funding put back in for House of Refuge.
So, Michelle and Mr. Brady, I know at the end of last week's presentation, the question was asked, can some of these funding recommendations be allocated to CARE dollars, freeing up additional funding? So, House of Refuge was on the initial list. My understanding is we weren't, you know, defunding anyone. We were just looking for ways to use the additional money that could be transferred over from the CARES Act. Am I correct in that assumption?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Thompson, what, I guess what, the kind of the guidance we took from last week was to identify those specifically related to food security, so that we could easily, recognizing that was a program that was clear in the guidance from the federal dollars, that we could then exchange out some of those dollars, have, reduce the amount coming from the general fund, and using, and replacing it with the Mesa CARES dollars. So that's why we focused just on those three programs there. And then we took the savings from that and put it into the Mesa Promise Program. We haven't touched any of the other agencies or dollars, because they weren't not, they weren't specifically related to the food. And so that, that's why we, we really haven't made any changes. Now, to Councilmember Thompson's question about supporting House of Refuge, they are, we actually have right now, and I may, it's either five or six, we have literally staff, we are now staffing up House of Refuge with five Parks employees, who are working there full-time now. And we wrote a check for $200,000 last week to Midwest Food Bank, who then provides the meals to House of Refuge to distribute to their clients. So I think we are, in multiple ways, we're in constant conversations now. We're staffing the administrative side, warehousing side, and a lot of logistics out at House of Refuge. They, they've become, we've become part of their family, and we are embedded with them. So I think, well beyond, oh, I mean, sorry, we have two, sorry, I overstated, two right now at House of Refuge. But we are supporting them well beyond their requests that they, they made, or even these dollars you see here. It's, they're, I think we're trying to do everything we can to support It's, they're, I think we're trying to do everything we can to support their activities that are specifically related, that are eligible under the Mesa Care's program. So we're delivering, we'll be providing food and staffing for them.
And Chris, on the staffing side, are we going to be, are we hoping to get reimbursed by those dollars from the CARES Act? Is that what we're, what we're hoping to do? Because I know there was a question from one of my constituents about utilizing city employees that are paid by tax dollars to work at nonprofits and being paid by tax dollars. And so I told him originally that it was, that we're looking to be, it'll be reimbursable under CARES Act, we're just waiting on that authorization to go through and so forth. Is that still the case?
That is, the case is that we anticipate that we'll get reimbursed, but I guess philosophically, remember, all these are nonprofits that are getting taxpayer dollars. Whether it's the city employee's payroll, or whether it's dollars coming out of the general fund, the effect is the same, but we are, and we're writing large checks to nonprofits than we always have. But in this case, yes, we are anticipating that because they have been substantially assigned, I'm not using the right word, redeployed, sorry, redeployed, and are doing something very different, or completely different, out of sight of what their original jobs were, that the guidance we believe we've received now is that that payroll, and as a matter of fact, we've created an entire new unit, organization inside our budget right now that has its own codes for charging activities, and we're moving employees into this new organization for Mesa teams, and they are being charged directly now, we created its own budget. So yeah, not only are they, some employees are keeping track of their time to get reimbursed, but we have, in parks, we are now literally moving individuals out of their current positions and into new positions in this new organization that we've stood up.
Thank you. So maybe just to clarify, on Michelle's presentation, the last three screens where we have the Human Services funding that went through the very detailed process that we approved in last week's council meeting, those recommendations, we already took action and made those awards. So the update today doesn't undo any of those allocations. So all of those allocations in screens one and two are a done deal. We're just talking about how to, now that we can move some money over to the CARES budget, we have some, freed up some additional funds that we can allocate, correct?
Yeah, Mayor, just correct, I think what we're asking, we didn't take action on the Human Services Fund as a, as a program. We took action on the CDBG, ESG, and Home Funds, but, and we pulled this aside, but you're correct, we didn't, we, the idea was not to change any of the other programming that's gone through the entire process through committee evaluations and reviews, but except for those ones that we identified that we could fund from the Mesa Care Funds, and that's what we have here, and we're just showing you the changes we've made and taking the dollars, using the CARES dollars to cover the costs through December, and then having the general fund pick up the cost, or the, their expenses from January through June 30th. That's, that's what this is showing you.
Thank you, I understood. So today, we'll be approving the general fund allocations. Last week, we did the federal dollars.
That's correct, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Council, additional questions regarding anything on this agenda item? Yes, Jeremy?
Yeah, I just want to thank staff for putting all this together so quickly. I think it's imperative, given the economic state right now, so I just wanted to say thanks to staff and working with all this and putting everything together. Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you, yeah, I'll echo that as well. This is, this is even better than we were expecting, so it's good to see, I think we're being smart in the way we're moving things over to the CARES Act, and hopefully that will be a boon to some of our nonprofits, so thank you. So Council, is there a motion to approve these updated fund recommendations? Thank you. Motion made by Mr. Luna, seconded by Mr. Freeman. We'll do a roll call vote. I vote aye. Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Whitaker?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Arredia?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Duff?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Luna?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Thompson?
Aye.
Thank you. Item 2B passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda is item 2C, that is to hear a presentation discuss and provide direction on an update on the Mesa Care's program, focusing on the Mesa Care's Small Business Assistance and Reemergence Program. Mr. Brady?
Thank you, Mayor. We're still building this plane while we're flying, Mayor, I hope you recognize that. So we're, today, we're bringing more parts of this plane that we're trying to get off the ground and fly, and I will tell you that it's, it's a challenge because we're being pushed not only to do things very quickly and change the way we operate internally and pull people off of what they've normally been doing, but we're asked to bring, asked to bring programs and develop programs that is not typically kind of in our wheelhouse as far as programs. So today, though, we feel like it's important, and we think the timing is actually critical with what the governor is working on as far as bringing the economy back in Mesa, sorry, well, I guess, the rest of Arizona too. And so we wanted to bring to you today kind of another phase, another program in that Mesa Care's program, and this one, we want to focus on small business. So I will tell you that we wanted to come to council because we kind of really needed to bring kind of some of our thoughts and where we are with this, and this is a big challenge for us. We really need just some good thinking about, are we headed in the right direction? That's the goal we need today. At the same time, we don't want to spend a lot of time, we're trying to avoid it even internally, getting too detail-specific and worrying about too many details because we feel an urgency to get applications out and to begin dispersing funding very quickly. And so we need to kind of balance out, are we headed in the right direction with, if we need to do course corrections, we will, but we want to get out and start promoting these programs, getting applications. So that's where we are today, but we certainly would love your input, as you have heard from businesses in the community, and how we can have the most meaningful impact with the dollars we have. So we went out, found the best and the brightest, Jay O'Donnell, so she's leading our Small Business Reemergence Program, so we're going to ask her to give that presentation to you today.
Thank you, Chris. Good morning, Mayor and Council, it's so nice to be here. It's actually really nice to be here, out of, out of my house, and nice to see colleagues in person, so thank you for this opportunity to present to you today. As, as Chris mentioned, I'm Jay O'Donnell, I'm the Assistant Economic Development Director for the City of Mesa. And I wanted to, first of all, just provide an update on the City of Mesa's response to COVID-19, and then to introduce to you the Mesa Care's Small Business Reemergence Program. It seems a lot longer than six weeks ago, but it was just over six weeks ago when companies started to be affected, and then obviously to close due to executive order, when our economic development staff really pivoted to focus the bulk of our time on business outreach. We quickly launched a needs assessment of the business community, we interviewed businesses, and encouraged Mesa companies to complete our Business Impact Survey, and then we also reviewed other data resources to determine and gauge need, not only immediate, but what might be the need longer term. I was also really pleased that our staff mobilized very quickly and developed a one-stop business and workforce website portal that provides valuable information, resources, and connectivity, targeting businesses, employees, and those recently unemployed, to obviously provide networking opportunities for those groups. In terms of the CARES Act, we knew that we were going to be receiving municipal funds, a lump sum, to help in various ways. So while we were waiting for those official guidelines, and obviously before we knew those, what the formal parameters were, we have been planning and preparing and developing a program for relief specifically for business, businesses in Mesa, and there has been literally a team of people working on this. So now the Department of Treasury guidelines have been released, the CARES Act funds may only be used to cover costs that are necessary expenditures incurred due to the public health emergency between March 1st and December 30th of this year. More specifically, the CARES Act funding is for expenses associated with the provision of economic support and expenditures related to grants to support and reimburse the costs of business interruption caused by the required closures. So I want everybody to, I wanted everybody to have a clear understanding of what those guidelines are. Also wanted to share our Business Impact Survey results with you. The survey actually closes today, so if any business owners are listening that have not filled out our survey, we ask that they do so. To date, we've had 450 responses, 82% of those were Mesa businesses, and 50% of those had less than four employees. So we have very small businesses in Mesa, and we want to be able to service that population. 33% of them had five to 24 employees. The years at the Mesa location, I was really pleased to see that many of them have been in business for one to five years, 30%, nearly 30% for six to 15 years, and then just over a quarter in, at the Mesa location for 16-plus years. 60% of those businesses lease their facility and 40% own. When asked, how did COVID-19 affect your business, 54% of respondents said they were significantly affected. 26% said minimal impact, and 16% reported they're on the verge of losing their business. And the bulk of these responses to our survey happened probably two weeks ago or more. I would wager that that number would be higher today. As you might imagine, the greatest need is immediate financial relief in the form of rent relief or deferral, utility relief, cash grants, short-term loans. There was also a lot of comments about how SBA could improve their process and make it a little more accessible or clearer. The businesses who are open or who want to reopen need access to personal protective equipment and cleaning supplies, and then the businesses really need their customers to return. And their, the biggest stress point is the unknown of when they will be able to open or operate more fully, which hopefully some of that was clarified by the governor yesterday during his press conference. Many of the respondents we've found, and with the interviews that we've been doing with businesses, it's clear that some of our companies do not have a website presence, so it's very difficult for them to market during this, this time period, and many of them cannot accept online payment, so operating in this environment is literally impossible for many of them. So during the last month, there has been a team of people at the city processing all of this data, working hard to try and stand up a meaningful program that has multiple lines of service, including financial assistance, technical assistance, and marketing support. So saving businesses in Mesa has been our number-one priority since March. I wanted to just cover briefly what we're going to talk about today. I'll give you an idea of Mesa's business landscape, the goals of the program, the Small Business Reemergence Program, the process that we're using for determining a policy for the awards, and then eligibility recommendations. And obviously, the program is in draft form, as Mr. Brady mentioned, so we'll be looking to you for guidance and direction and feedback. I think the majority of people understand that small business, small businesses are the backbone of Mesa's economy. While the City of Mesa does not have a business registry list, our analysts have used multiple sources of data to estimate our total business count to be 12,000. Of those, the number of businesses in Mesa with less than 100 employees is 11,834. And if you drop the parameter down to 50, under 50 employees, it's 11,500 businesses. So we do have a lot of businesses that are, that are considered very small. We know that the businesses hit the hardest by this pandemic are retail, restaurants, and hospitality. Mesa has 2,200 restaurants and bars. We have 66 hotel properties representing 5,500-plus hotel rooms. The restaurant payroll in the state, I heard this stat yesterday, I believe, has gone from $14 million a day paying out to $3 million a day in payroll. The hotel business in Mesa has also been decimated. Obviously, there is great need in Mesa, but there's also limited funding. So with that in mind, we focused on some key goals going forward. The goals of the Mesa Care's program are to help as many Mesa-based businesses as possible and still provide meaningful assistance. We want to prioritize assistance for businesses who did not receive any CARES Act funding, and for businesses who are mandated to close or forced to significantly modify their operations due to executive order. We also want to distribute the funds directly to businesses quickly, efficiently, and obviously within the guidelines of the CARES Act. We also think it's important to provide technical assistance to businesses for marketing, safety and health training, workforce development, website development, disaster preparedness, and even facility redesign and modification, because we know that companies are going to need some help fine-tuning how they do business and manage flow of people. And the city could work with vendors, academic partners, and other consultants to offer these services. So our policy considerations and to design the program, our recommendations are, again, to focus on those businesses who did not receive CARES Act funding, making sure the businesses have a physical, commercial address in Mesa. We do feel strongly that this needs to be a grant program so that we can get the awards out quickly and efficiently. And then we also anticipate that the awards will be based on the demand for the program and the amount of funding available, both of which are unsure at this time. We also feel it's important to focus on the industries hit the hardest, or those that have significantly been impacted by COVID-19. So armed with that framework, the following is our proposal for Mesa's Small Business Reemergence Program. The Reemergence Program is a relief and recovery program, and based on the guidelines, it is to cover or reimburse expenses during business interruption. So the intent is to help businesses planning to reopen or to get back to full operation, or as close to full operation as possible with the, the social distancing guidelines and other safety and health concerns. So the grant is for eligible businesses to cover monthly essential operating expenses up to 90 days, beginning on March 1st, so through the end of May, and it will cover utilities and rent or mortgage payments. So supporting documentation will be required, and awards will most likely be capped at a few different tiers. We purposely avoided the payroll expenses just because we thought it might be more difficult to verify that in a, in a quick manner, and a lot of businesses have, have obviously changed their payroll right now, so that's one of the reasons we left that piece out. We also felt that, and I don't have it in here, but it would be wise to make sure that the business has been in business for 12 months or longer, that's also a point we can discuss. So the process for the application is fairly simple. We, we will make it available online, and will, and will be open for two weeks. The Mesa Care's call center staff will be available to answer questions, and also help complete applications over the phone for those businesses who may not be able to fill it out online. Verification documents will need to be uploaded with the online application, including lease agreements, mortgage invoices, and utility bills. After the application deadline, there will be an evaluation period to determine how many applications may be funded and at what level, and the goal is to make the awards and deploy grants no later than July 1st. Any questions, comments, or discussions? Any questions, comments, or discussion?
Thank you very much. I'm sure we've got, I see everyone's hands in the air. I'm going to start with Mr. Luna.
Hey, Jay, thank you so much for that presentation. What about minority-owned businesses? We know that there are many Latino businesses, as well as our Asian district, women-owned businesses that have suffered through this pandemic. Were you able to ascertain through your survey how many of those businesses were affected throughout the City of Mesa?
Mayor and Councilmember Luna, we do know that those businesses have been greatly affected. We did not ask specifically in the survey to call out whether or not they were a minority-owned business, but we have heard directly from those businesses, as well as from the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, the Asian Chamber of Commerce, so we know those businesses are hurting. That's one of the things that I think is appealing to this program. It's really geared toward those small businesses. We've not set aside funding for any minority groups, but I can tell you that those businesses who do not have a relationship with or were a good relationship with a lending agency who didn't have access to the SBA CARES Act, this is really tailored to, excuse me, the CARES Act, this is really tailored to those companies.
Okay, so, and you mentioned that if they applied for an SBA loan and they received funding from them, they wouldn't be able to access the funding that the City of Mesa currently has?
At this point, the way it's structured, we thought we should prioritize those businesses who do not receive funding. It's not to say that they couldn't, depending on their, I guess, level of funding from the SBA, that they couldn't receive additional funding from this program, if that's the way we choose to structure it.
And how do you plan to get the information out to, and of course, I'm focused on the Latino-based businesses. Are you, how are you going to do outreach to them and let them know that this funding is going to be available? And then when do you plan to actually launch the program?
So we have met with our team, and IT has been working around the clock. We really, excuse me, Mayor and Council, we really think that it's important to get this online as quickly as possible. We feel that we could launch the program on May 11th, which is a Monday. However, that gives us then just a week to really market and really target those businesses who we feel strongly should be applying for this program. We can also move that time back if you would like us to take a little bit longer to market the program, but we know there's some urgency there. We will be equipped with Spanish speakers in the CARE Center, and I also think that it is probably feasible that we can make the application available in Spanish as well. And then we also have worked with the Asian Chamber of Commerce to see if they would be available to help with some translation services to walk businesses through the application.
And Councilmember, we talked about having the application open for two weeks. We will take the week before that to promote it, but we'll keep promoting it through, even time the application is out there. So in theory, we will have promoting it for at least two weeks, two and a half weeks, before we'll close the deadline. So we want to do everything, and we'll work with all the chambers, as I think Jay just mentioned, whether it's the Asian Chamber, the Hispanic Chamber, the Mesa Chamber, any of our groups to get the word out, to assist us in trying to reach out to all of the businesses that we have in Mesa.
And so for those businesses that may not be technology savvy, it's a small businesses, will you accept a paper application, or are they going to require to submit the application online only?
Mayor and Councilmember Luna, there has been discussions about how to handle paper applications, mainly because of safety and health concerns. So there will be an option or a way to submit that. We had talked about having the Mesa CARES call center do the intake and do the entry for the applicant, and then those invoices that need to be submitted as verification documents could be, you could take a picture of it with your phone and then email it to the call center representative.
Okay, great. Now, next week, on Thursday, Councilmember Heredia and I will be hosting a small business symposium via Facebook Live in Espanol, so we would be more than happy to begin to get the word out that this is available. So we're looking forward to that. I think it's timely. We are going to do it next Thursday so that we can certainly let our Spanish-speaking community know that this is available. But we want to make sure that all minority communities are aware of what's going on so that they can take advantage of these dollars that they may qualify for. So, so thank you, Jay. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Luna. I know we had other hands, I believe Mr. Freeman, you were one of them?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. How, I guess, how many dollars are being allocated towards this? Jay, I'm just thinking about, do we have any idea?
I told her. So we, I think from a large perspective of the 90 million right now, we've kind of set aside about 20% of that for this program. But frankly, what we want to see is the part of getting the applications out and getting the response back, that we can get a sense of the demand, the needs that are out there. So again, we're just trying to find all the buckets that we have identified through the needs assessment and allocating dollars to each one of those. And it's about 20% for each one of them, and so that's where we're at today. And then I think what will happen is, is we get the applications in, and we can look at that and come back to council and tell you what the demand looks like. I think that's why we're trying to be very careful to manage expectations, but at the same time, make it fit inside of a budget. And so that'll probably determine, as Jay was saying, if we fix an amount for the whole program, then when we come back and look at the demand, we'll create tiers of flat fees, probably for different groupings, that may not cover all of their costs, but should give them a substantial, meaningful financial boost for the next, well, for the three months, for the 90 days that we talked about.
So Chris, along with that, my thought was, do you think two weeks is enough for the application process? Or are you going to schedule a second round to allow, you know, some restaurants, you know, to Mr. Luna's comment, is some restaurants may not be able to, you know, the word of mouth travels, and they may want to do a paper or cannot, or have no electronic means. So I just wondered if you're going to have a second round of application?
Yeah, no, that's a great question. I think in my mind, let's try to give the best effort we can with this first round and commit to that, and then when we get the applications in, let's see how many we get, see what the demand is, and then we can come back, and we'll have a better sense, too, of how the other dollars are being spent. But if we decide that the first round, we have additional capacity, I have no problem coming back to council and saying, hey, let's restart this. I think where we are right now is in this mode of trying to be comprehensive, but also timely in getting dollars out. We were actually kind of debated as two weeks too long, because for every week we wait to get the applications and review the applications and then verify information and then get a checkout, it's another day, another week that a business is without any kind of support. And so we're trying to balance all that out. So I think the timeline we've recommended gives us a first round and a view, and if we're oversubscribed, then we'll know that'll be the conclusion of that program. If it's not, and we see capacity from other programs that maybe you don't need as much of the funding, we could come back for a second round, absolutely, if we feel like we didn't pick up all the businesses. So I think I more want to emphasize, let's try to get as many businesses as we can in this first round, do that evaluation, get those dollars out as quickly as we can, and then if there's an opportunity to do another round before the end of the year and there's funding available, we do not want to have funding sitting around. We want to get it out the door, so.
I guess that's where, just my final comment, repurposing employees, I mean, it sounds like there's going to be a lot of people involved in this process. I mean, you're just not going to have 15 or 20, I imagine. It's going to take a lot of people to get this job done. So thank you, that's your job. I'm going to sign off on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Heredia?
Yeah, no, my question kind of goes with what Councilmember Luna mentioned. Thanks, Jay, for the information. Just curious to see, you know, I know you didn't collect detailed information on this survey, but is there, were these mostly restaurants, or what was a mix of the types of businesses? I might have missed that for your comments.
Mayor and Councilmember Heredia, there were a mix of industries, and we had a dropdown that they could basically choose from. So we did have some restaurants, construction, developers, retailers, professional services, personal services. It really was a fairly broad group, which is nice to see that there's a demand across all industries. But I do feel that there will be a strong demand for this particular program from restaurants.
And then my other point was, again, to Councilmember Luna's comments were, you know, especially within the minority, small businesses, and, you know, looking at my district, the Asian district, that we worked so hard to ensure we got it going, and in addition to, you know, the Spanish-speaking owners of small businesses, is we might have to, you know, have some proactive, keep on the proactive outreach efforts to let them know and talk through the process of how they can apply. So just making sure that we're looking at proactive measures along the way to keep on spreading the word and facilitating the process for the application.
Mayor and Councilmember Heredia, we will definitely do that. I think the good news is that through the process of branding the Asian district, we have established a strong network of contacts and a good partnership with the stakeholders in that particular district, and then with the other minority groups. We have also been proactive in reaching out to our other city departments who have relationships and leveraging those, so neighborhood services, police, fire, and really trying to utilize those networks to communicate with a variety of different groups.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Thompson?
And to that point, I just want to make sure that the focus stays on helping all small businesses and not providing, you know, racial preference one way or the other, that we're really focused on helping all small businesses reemerge from this travesty and get our economy functioning again in Mesa.
Thank you. Jen?
Yes, I have quite a few comments, and I just wanted to bring to attention that according to the Center for Responsible Lending, roughly 95% of Black-owned businesses, 91% of Latino-owned businesses, and 91% of Native Hawaiian or Pacific Islander-owned businesses, 75% of Asian-owned businesses stand no chance of getting a PPP loan through the mainstream bank or credit union. Those relationships of banks and credit unions are really geared toward the more sophisticated businesses. They have more of an opportunity. So I would like to suggest a weight on ethnicity and race and gender. I would like it on the application in order for us to better support those microbusinesses, those businesses under five employees, under 25 employees, because those small businesses, I think that's where we, as a city, can have the most impact. I don't think through the federal programs and grants, it's much more difficult and much further out of reach for those businesses. One of the concern is the accountability of the businesses once they get the money. How do we make sure that they use those monies to get back in business and just don't close up shop and run? So I think we need to put in some terms and conditions about that. Also, the speed in which we get the money to the businesses is critical. I know we've put a lot of work into it and taking these applications in two weeks, but our goal of July 1st is way too slow in dispersing the monies. It's way too late to save these businesses that are in crisis right now. Therefore, I would like to suggest that we use a CDFI like Lisk to disperse the monies. They are set up, have everything in place, they're already processing grants and assistance from poor cities across the nation. They're already set up to be able to take this in. They have the network and the databases in order to do it, and they are processing loans and getting them back in, loans and grants, back into the hands of businesses within one week. Their turnaround time is in one week. In addition to, after we fund, we need to do those hand-holding services of not only filling out the application, but the ongoing assistance of the marketing and the counseling and the advertising, what they can do to make their business more resilient. Someone like Lisk and our other maybe CDCs have some of those opportunities to guide business and be ongoing after we give the money out. Then my other question is on the utilities. Are we doing more outside of the business assistance for businesses on utilities? There was a comment in earlier, in another session, that we talked about coordination with SRP and APS and putting together a program. I don't know if that assistance is going to be wrapped into what we're doing in this program, or that's going to be something else in the CARES program. Let's see, I have notes all over my paper I've been making as we do. I'll leave it at that and have those conversations, and I might have a couple of other comments. But, you know, of all the things we do, great things we do as a city, we must be remembered in how we helped our community in this time of crisis, so it's critical that we get it right and do it to the best of our ability in order to make a difference and save our city and save our businesses and families. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Duff.
Can I just make a comment on that? Because I think there were some suggestions there which would dramatically change the course that we're going right now. We are really trying to simplify this process, and we've been very careful to keep it very simple as far as the application process, how we identify any business in Mesa to receive funding, so that we don't have to spend a lot of time vetting through the process and scoring and spending a lot of time doing that. I understand there's times when that is important for certain purposes. Again, with our urgency of getting dollars out and trying to treat everyone being impacted the same, we've not made that distinction, certainly in times when we have dollars to make those kind of discrepancies we have. And frankly, we think as a city, we're better positioned to push these dollars out because they're in our bank account, and we have lots of staff that are now available to assist us in standing up these programs. We've invested tremendous amount of resources to get the application ready, to do the marketing. So we feel like we're in the position on accountability side to the federal government, how these dollars are spent, as opposed to using third parties or nonprofits, which then requires to open up a process to negotiate and to negotiate agreements and then have monitoring of the dollars. I think that the Treasury and the discussions we've had, this is intended for cities to disperse dollars, and so that's kind of where we've been. That's the path we've been running down for some time. We're, if we need a reverse course, that may take us some time, but right now, we think that the simplification of treating all businesses in Mesa, really more the distinction will be by size and their expenses, but we have every intention of reaching down to the smallest businesses we can, and so the outreach will be very important. But that's the path we're headed on right now. Thank you.
And Mayor, members of And Mayor, members of the council, if I could just add one more thing on the speed of distribution. I do appreciate that there are a number of agencies who could help us distribute this funding. One of the pieces that we've been fairly deliberate about is wanting to assist the businesses that are coming to the city. And this is a way for us to intake the client and make sure then that we're able to service them, if not with the financial assistance, through technical assistance, through other resources, workforce development programs, through our partnerships with academic institutions. So that is in our wheelhouse. That is what we do already. And so we want to make sure that we're providing that service in a very streamlined approach and make it a one-stop contact, basically, to help that client and that Mesa company as quickly as possible.
Thank you. Jen?
I'd like to suggest at least having the conversation with Lisk. They are doing it for cities across the nation, and so they do understand the requirements for federal funding, at least have that. Are we working with any partners in order to take care of this program? Are we doing everything internally? And did you say, is anything available for nonprofits?
So because we have a tremendous amount of overhead that is fairly underutilized right now, that's why we've activated that. And so we're keeping the cost very nominal. We don't have to pay anybody else for their overhead to administer this program because it's already available within the city. And so that's why we really aren't having those conversations. And we can have the conversations, but again, the speed of delivery and being able to, I guess, manage the process from the outreach to the review of the applications, which we've already created, to cutting the checks from our account, we believe gives us the total accountability that we're going to need to report back to Treasury. Treasury is not going to worry about how a third party spent the money. They're going to ask us how we monitored it. And again, setting up monitoring agreements and with this volume of dollars and the number of applications is not something that we take lightly, and it could be a significant burden on the city in the future. But we can ask. But again, we feel pretty comfortable that we're in a position, we've stood up these programs, and we've got people in place that we can, and lots of people. I mean, not just four or five, but we've got dozens of people that are ready to make this happen. As far as whether nonprofits will be available for this, again, if they meet the criteria of being impacted by COVID, and they can show that, how they meet the same criteria of rent and utilities, then I don't know why they wouldn't be eligible.
Mayor, may I make another comment?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I would like to at least say, please call Lisk and talk to them about what they have and what their resources are, because the effectiveness is critical. How fast we get it out, but the effectiveness and what it does. We are not an institution that deals with assisting small businesses, and I appreciate that we're trying to do this as quickly and expeditiously as we can within the city. But I think we owe it to our businesses to have a sophisticated way in which it's really truly affecting them. Also, working with Lisk or another CDFI, they can coordinate other grant opportunities. Which brings me to also, I forgot what I was going to say on that. Oh, is that, so if a business applies and they have outstanding applications, let's say for the PPP program or stuff like that, and how do we get that coordination to know that they're receiving the money from the federal dollars and then they're getting it? There's a coordination point of knowing if we're really funding businesses that aren't getting other assistance. And again, the point of the small microbusinesses, they have little to no chance to even get any federal funding from the feds. So as much as we can make a small, micro, minority-weighted businesses, the more effective we're going to be for our community, there's other opportunities for the larger businesses. And July 1st, is there anything we can do about that? July 1st is how many more months of rents that are missed? Businesses will be gone by then.
Mayor and Councilmember Duff, if I may, I do believe that we can get the funds deployed much quicker than that. As far as the question about speed, if we open the applications on May 11th and they're open for two weeks, that's May 25th, we will need a review period in that time to go through the applications and figure out what sort of subscription or demand we have. But I anticipate that would be about another week. So by early June, if not the first weekend in June, we could deploy awards at that point. In terms of coordinating, there are two categories of applicants in my mind. There are those businesses who did not apply for SBA funding, so that's not an issue for checking. And then there's another category of businesses who applied and are still waiting. So by the time the end of May comes around and we've accepted their application and have said, this is how much of an award you're receiving, there will need to be a letter that goes out. It's basically a reiteration of the agreement and their agreement to pledge that they are reopening or they're opening in a fuller capacity and they're using this money for what they applied for, rent and mortgage, or excuse me, rent and utilities. And then at that point, I do think that they will know if they've received PPP or IDOL or the other federal programming funds that might be available. I hope that answered your question.
Yeah, yes, it did. Are we providing any other support as far as you had in your presentation, the technical side of marketing and resiliency and planning, financials? Are there any other assistance or wraparound services that we're providing in order to help these businesses?
Mayor and Councilmember Duff, yes, a short answer. And on the technical assistance side, we're already providing counseling services in the Office of Economic Development to companies to help them find the right resources based on their needs. What we'd like to do as a second pillar of this program overall is to contract with consultants or academic institutions or other vendors to provide technical assistance to companies who need it, where they would get a certain amount of hours per se to build a website or to develop a marketing plan or to, you know, have a consultant come in and redesign the interior of their store so there's more space for clients to walk through the store. There's more space for a restaurant, so they're practicing the guidelines that are in place for dine-in restaurants, those kinds of things. And I'm sure there are a number of services that we haven't even thought of. There are simple things that we could cover to help businesses, like just a QuickBooks class or other webinars about how you train your staff now on health and safety practices to make sure they're ready to come back into the workplace in a safe way.
I'd like to suggest that we use some partner organizations to reach the businesses so they know there's assistance available through the city. I'm afraid that a lot of our small businesses that are on the brink of going out of business have no idea that the city even has funding available and how to go about that. And some of these partners who are in the community are the ones who can bring it forward and let them know it's available and also help them fill out the application and get the documents in order for them to apply for funding. And then the other thing going back, and I might have missed it in the answers, are we doing anything for utilities outside of this program for businesses? Sorry if I missed that previously.
I'm sorry. What's the question again?
Are we doing anything for utility assistance for businesses outside of this application process? Are we doing something independent in another bucket of our CARES program?
No, this program's intended to be that program, to provide assistance to businesses on your utilities.
Is there anything we can do in the meantime, between now and when we get the dispersments out, to defer or have some way to have these businesses hang on so they don't have to make decisions on utilities or buying groceries for their family?
Well, as you recall, we've already made the decision, we're not cutting off anybody's utilities at this point. So whether you're a household or any account with the city, there's no shut-off right now on delinquent accounts.
So they're not accumulating any late fees? It's okay to defer payments?
We would, yeah, I mean, there's no penalties. The utilization is obviously accumulating, yes. And we're encouraging them to pay and work out payment plans, but we're not doing anything to terminate service at all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Mayor, I wanted to go back to something that Jen said earlier about bringing in outside organizations to kind of help with small businesses. And she talked specifically about Lisk. But my question really to Jay is, is economic development situated to be able to help the small businesses and the microbusinesses? Or should we be bringing someone in from the outside to help navigate the small business world?
Mayor and Councilmember Thompson, thank you for that question. I would say that we welcome partnerships, and we utilize partnerships already with agencies, with the Mesa Chamber of Commerce, with SCORE. We have pivoted, certainly, our staff and a few of our key staff to really focus primarily on small businesses and microbusinesses. Before COVID-19, we regularly provided technical assistance to small businesses and microbusinesses. We actually have a small business website on selectmesa.com. So there's a litany of services and resources that you can find there. We published a business resource guide that is free and downloadable. We also have a number of other services free of charge to business. There's Size Up Mesa that's geared directly to small businesses who are trying to evaluate their position in the marketplace and their competitiveness. We have Mesa Site Select and Aerial Mesa for small businesses as well. So there are a number of services that we do provide to small businesses. I will tell you, this is unprecedented in terms of the number of calls and the number of companies who need assistance now. So we are relying much more heavily on our partners, and we're also able then to do a warm handoff, if at all possible. And I think that in terms of the service delivery for these technical assistance programs, while we have experience helping small businesses and counseling small businesses, we want subject matter experts in accounting, information technology, HR, website development. We want the experts to be providing those services directly to the businesses. And if we can set that up and work with our partners like the Chamber, Visit Mesa, to do that, absolutely, we're willing to do that. That's the plan.
So Mayor and Councilwoman, oh, go ahead, Kevin.
I was going to say, and I think it's important that we do partner with as many as we can. Going back to your presentation with, you know, we have, what, about 23, 24,000 small businesses with less than 100 employees. That's a major undertaking to get the word out to those folks that funding's available from the city. So I think it's important that we do partner with outside agencies and so forth to help get that word out and make sure that the businesses know that we're doing all we can to try to help them and so forth. So thank you.
So Mayor and Councilwoman, real quick, I think, let's just maybe clarify, one of the reasons that cities, we feel strongly that we're the right position to do the application for assistance on utilities and rental and mortgages, because we do utilities, and we've already had the conversations with Southwest Gas and SRP to join with us in helping us to facilitate getting those payments done. So I think we feel like we're pretty strong in that area. As you're suggesting, economic development has a very good relationship. As far as the business assistance and ongoing kind of outreach to the business community, absolutely, we're going to use partners in the community in a big way. And we'll rely upon them to help us beyond just making payments to mortgage and utilities. That helps. But beyond that, what we want these businesses is to be stronger than they were going into this and to pivot maybe on the digital side and on the business planning side. So yes, we are going to be intentionally looking for lots of different partners to assist us in that area.
Okay, I know, Jeremy, you had your hand up, correct?
Oh, sorry, my microphone's already on. I just want to go back to the issue that we spoke about ethnicity and weighting this program towards minorities or otherwise. I don't think that we should be discriminating against a small business owner, whether they're white, black, Latino, whatever it may be. I don't understand that the requirements for the program should be based on the economics of the business. So I just want to say that I firmly object to using any form of ethnicity to discriminate against who should get funds that we're handing out. And I guess my question on that note would be for legal, you know, is that even possible to put on an application? You know, what is your ethnicity? And, you know, we're going to discriminate or there's a chance that you're not going to get the loan if you're of a specific race?
Mayor and councilmembers, so you do see in some federal legislation that there's preference points provided to minority-owned businesses or women-owned businesses. I'm not aware of any of, and as part of that legislation, the federal government provides a factual basis for that and to provide a rational basis in case there's a challenge constitutionally on that legislation. I'm not aware of any of those type of factual basis findings or language within the CARES Act. And so that type of process, that does occur in other federal legislation, I don't believe is within the CARES Act. I haven't read, you know, through the entire, more than, I think, thousand pages of it. But that's why also we have not included that type of provision within our process. Not to mention, it also then makes it subject to potential challenges, which would also further delay the very process that we're seeking to do quickly.
Okay, thank you.
I have four questions if I can proceed.
Go ahead.
We talked about the PPP and making people who got the PPP loan ineligible for this funding. So my question is, I know that the Treasury just released their second round of PPP funding. They just opened, I think, late last week. Is there going to be a clawback provision in this money? Or is this a process that we're thinking about doing so that if they receive the PPP money at a later date, that we can then take this money back and redistribute it to businesses who may not have gotten funded through our program?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilman Whitaker, that's a great question, and we've kind of, I don't know the great answer to that. I think what we're going to put in the application or receipt of funding, that it's understood that it was not intended for that. But again, if there's multiple rounds beyond even what we have today, I don't know how to manage that. It's a great question. I mean, initially, I think we were kind of going with what everybody's, what we're hearing is the more sophisticated, larger businesses have been able to access that. And we were kind of under the opinion, we wanted to help those who didn't get in in the first rounds or two and try to provide this assistance to them now. But beyond that, I don't know how, we could certainly put language in there suggesting that they need to pay it back. The enforcement of that would be difficult. And really, that's a city policy. That's not something the federal government is, you know, that's not their policy. So we were just trying to stretch dollars and provide as much relief to as many people as possible. How we would execute that, it's a great question, but it's a difficult one to answer right now for me. And if that's the direction we want to go, we can certainly look into it. But we were kind of thinking in that first round and maybe the second round where the larger companies have been received assistance, that was one way to kind of... received assistance, that was one way to kind of keep them out of this pot, if you would, and allow us to focus more resources on the smallest of the organizations. That's, that was kind of our intention. It's not strictly enforceable, but it was, that was our intention. But we're open to any ideas.
So I appreciate that. And I guess my only suggestion would be is that I hope we put, enforceable or not, some type of language in there that says if they receive PPP at a later date, that, you know, somehow we should be able to clawback that money. And I also want to point out that everybody keeps talking about how difficult it is to get this PPP funding. And I know that, I think the issue is that most people may be trying to go directly to their bank that they have a relationship with, or maybe a major institution. But I've worked with many small businesses, and there's a credit union, Notre Dame Federal Credit Union up in, I think they're in Scottsdale or Paradise Valley. Their application process is 45 minutes, and they're funding everything within five to seven days. And I've seen this on multiple instances that they're funding these PPP loans. So, you know, I'm not sure why people are having so much difficulty getting the PPP stuff. Moving on, I want to go back, Jay, I want to thank you for your presentation. I didn't see in there, you had indicated that there is a survey that businesses can take, but I didn't see a link anywhere in your presentation. Did I miss that, or where can businesses find this survey that you guys are pushing down?
Sure, mayors and councilmember, mayor and councilmembers, excuse me. If you just go on to our business website, it's selectmesa.com. On the very front page, you'll click on the COVID-19 assistance, and it takes you to the page that has the Business Impact Survey link.
Well, we can send that link out to the council today if you'd like.
Great, I appreciate it. Thank you. And I noticed in the presentation that we're excluding home-based businesses. Is there a reason behind that, or how come the home-based businesses aren't going to be included in this funding?
Mayor and Councilmember Whitaker, thank you for that question. We discussed at length this particular piece of it, and we did struggle with it. We did feel that the home-based businesses were probably a bit more sustainable because of the way they've structured their business operation, and they did not have the same expenses related to overhead. So we, that was our rationale. But we had numerous conversations about what to do. Chris, I know you have something to add.
No, I think that's a great answer. And councillor, Mayor Councilmember Whitaker, I think the thought was, as we, the next program where we need to start, we're working on now to roll out is our household relief program, and thinking that those individuals would probably fit under that easier. So that's, we're just trying to figure out, because we didn't want to have them being able to get the business assistance and the household assistance if they're at the home. But again, we're open to, that idea is just trying to distinguish the business expense from the household expense in those situations, and I think that's what we struggled with. And we have to be careful from Treasury about how we provide assistance through utilities. On the business side, it's pretty apparent we can do that directly. On a household, it's not as simple as it is on the business side.
Yeah, I think, I appreciate the comment, Chris. And I think that when you, as a, if I remember correctly, when I had my business out of my house, I believe there's a federal form that you have to file that uses your square footage, and you have to provide all your utilities and everything. So I assume there's some type of formula that we can extract from that. And I guess, moving forward, I know that we still have this, we're still trying to work out the details here. But one of the things I would suggest is perhaps the home-based businesses can apply, and there's just a checkbox that says, is this a home-based business, or do you have a physical location? And at which point, we can use some formula or weight-based metric to determine if we do or don't fund those types of businesses.
Okay.
I want to move on to something else. And regarding the PPP, luckily, we saw the federal government roll out PPP, so we know, we have some idea of the flaws or the things that came out with the PPP lending. And one of those that really infuriated people were publicly traded companies, or companies that were using dividend buybacks to, you know, artificially inflate their stock prices, were then going out and applying for this PPP fund intended for small businesses. So my question is, I assume publicly traded companies would be excluded from our funding in the first place. And then I guess the second question is, are we going to require any type of documentation that shows executive or board-level salary or payroll data, you know, to make sure that we're not just simply handing out money that's going to go, you know, right into the pocket of the top of the business, rather than trickle down to everyone in which we're intending?
Yeah, that's, we went through all those questions too, Councilmember, and yeah, we struggle with that, because there are companies in Mesa that hire Mesa employees, but they are regional, national chains. They have a physical address in Mesa. But the question is, how do those dollars go directly to benefit? That's why we limited this to utilities and mortgage. And I think what we're looking for is to identify that those are mortgages and utilities that they're going to make payments to locally here, as opposed to taking the dollars and sending them to, you know, a corporate headquarters in another state. So what we're looking to do is that the funds that we provide them, either through direct dollars or a voucher or whatever, have to be spent on those purposes. That's why we were pretty narrow, and what we allowed for so to try to avoid, you know, the broad definition of overhead, so that we could try to make sure those dollars are being spent on local expenses. Maybe we're being oversimplified in that, but that was our hope, is to try to narrow the eligibility so that it went directly to the activity in Mesa, if that makes sense.
Yeah. And what about limiting the business, or making the requirements in such that, I guess to Jen's point of financing micro businesses, or whatever the other term was, you know, are we going to put any provisions in there that say something to the effect of your revenue cannot exceed X, your net income cannot exceed X, to make sure that they're actually going to small businesses? Or I assume there will be some stipulation in there that defines what a small business is?
Mayor and Councilmember Whitaker, if I may answer that question, we do have on the application form, an area where they have to specify the type of business that they are, whether it's an S corp or an LLC. But I don't believe we have put any requirements on in terms of what they earn as a company. It's really tied to the number of employees, and it's full-time equivalent employees. So if they have 40 part-time employees working 20 hours a week, that's 20, you know, full-time employees or the equivalent. So I hear what you're saying, and I would have to go back and look at the application, but we can see how we might fine tune that. I just want to be careful about precluding or excluding companies that are based in Mesa who do need these dollars.
Yeah. And again, I know, we can take the lessons learned from the PPP program, right? Like, we saw outrage because we had hedge fund managers who were defined as small businesses because of the number of employees, but are some of the wealthiest people in our country. So I guess I'm again asking that we put some form of provision in there that defines what a small business is, based on some form of, whether it's a revenue cap, net income, however you want to define it, you know, based on the accounting metrics. But just saying, if you have less than X amount of employees, you know, I don't necessarily think that's going to direct the money in the correct place. You could be giving it to some of the wealthiest people in our city that don't need it. And I want to take one step back and confirm then, are publicly traded companies going to be excluded from this program?
Mayor, Member, Councilmember Whitaker, I might defer to Jim on that one.
Mayor and Council, yeah, no, I think we can look at that. I think we could look at whether or not we can-
I don't know that it's in the current application, we could. I think that's why we're hesitating. If that's the direction of the council, we're, again, it goes to, we could. And certainly, that's something we could do. Again, we're looking at this as jobs, people in Mesa that work in Mesa, even if they work for a company of 75 that may be a publicly traded company. But that's why we're trying to focus the dollars to benefit the location in Mesa, and not go beyond that. But I, there's a lot of arguments either way. I think we're just trying to focus on those enterprises that choose to be in Mesa, that are located in Mesa, have Mesa employees, or at least have a number of employees that have come to work in Mesa. And we're trying to keep it that simple. But you bring up a lot of good points. It's just, again, of speed of delivery of these applications and how we evaluate them. And we're not going to cover all their costs. The idea is to kind of create some tiers and create a flat amount that covers most of the cost of, within those tiers, to provide meaningful assistance, but not spend a lot of time reviewing every utility bill and every mortgage, because then it will take us till December to get this out the door. The idea is to try to come up with a number that fits within different tiers that would be significant for those groups, and cut those checks, and make sure that those dollars go to pay for utilities, which most likely are going to be City of Mesa Utilities or SRP, and as well as the mortgage. Now, we could argue that the mortgage could go to a lender who's out of state, and they benefit from it. But it keeps that brick-and-mortar building up and running in Mesa. And then that allows for people to go to work there and earning income. So that's, I know it's simplified, and, but that's kind of where we've fallen. And everything you're saying, it makes sense, but it's the challenge of how do we make this work quickly?
Yeah. And I want to be clear, Chris, I'm not criticizing. I know staff-
Get that.
You know, we're trying to get this going as fast as possible. I'm just, I'm looking at all of the flaws that went wrong in the PPP program, and then saying, what can we do to alleviate all of those issues, right? And I think that the Treasury even released a document that had said something to the effect of publicly traded companies need not apply for PPP, because they understood that if you're a publicly traded company, you can raise capital by other means through selling stock or, you know, issuing new shares of stock. So I guess I would just, you know, I know we can't dot all our i's and cross all of our t's, but we can definitely make a really good attempt. And I appreciate what you guys are doing.
No, and that's great input, Councilmember Whitaker. If the council's comfortable with that, we don't want to do that. That's why we wanted to come talk to council, because that was one of those topics that we struggled with ourselves. But if council would like us to create that provision, we don't have a problem with it. We just, we really needed to come from the group to make sure we're, that was something we wanted to move forward with. But that's a great point, Councilmember.
Mayor and members of council, if I could just add, I think we did struggle with that a bit, because if you look at the hotel industry, there are a lot of flags in Mesa, and that would be one of those industries that was affected really, really horribly. And so from a corporate perspective, a Hilton or a Marriott may have corporate assistance, but I don't know locally if the money is trickling down to the Mesa-based business. And some are independently owned franchises. So how do you weigh that and make sure that we're still providing some meaningful assistance to those businesses? In fact, some of the hotels actually closed because they had to let go 80% to 90% of their staff, and so they don't have any revenue right now.
Yeah, thanks, Jay. I guess I'm just, my only point is, I don't think a hotel, if it was a franchise per se, it would then be owned by an individual. I don't think that would fall under a publicly traded company. And I'm just trying to be clear, like, we shouldn't be bailing out, maybe that's not the correct word, we shouldn't be subsidizing wealthy people in this process. And anything that we can put in place to make sure that that doesn't happen, I think should be the true intention of the program.
Thank you. That's good input.
Okay, thank you. I know Mr. Freeman has had a question.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I just want to circle back. You know, I support the current process that our staff has worked so hard on, because it's repurposing a bunch of employees in our city to help manage this. And I know we have great oversight. But then, you know, Chris, you made the comment that we're responsible for dispensing the funds to begin with at the federal level, plus, you know, there's probably going to be an auditing component towards the end or during so. But then, with that, you know, we can leverage the businesses, organizations that we have in the city, which we've mentioned, the Mesa Chamber, the Asian and Hispanic organizations. And really, we can lay this across the table for every business in the city. And I just believe that once this program starts, we're going to have businesses that go, oh, I forgot, or I was here, or I was managing some other issue, and I wasn't able to apply, but now I'm able to apply. So I think we need to be flexible on that. And then, the possibility of setting out notices in the utility bills to all businesses in the city, probably already thought about that, Facebook and other platforms that we utilize today, through SRP, through, if APS is a player, which I don't think they are, but there are other businesses that we can leverage and get the information out to everyone in the community. So thank you, I'll end with that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Jen?
Okay, there we go, unmuted. I have a few questions. You mentioned utilities. So are we paying any back bills directly to the utility providers, or we're giving it to the business, and then they're going, there was some comment made that made me think that we're even paying off utilities that were in delinquent directly, or is it going to them, and then they're paying their utilities? Or what's the coordination that we have with SRP and APS, those kinds of things?
Mayor and Councilmember Duff, the intent is to take a look at their utility bill that is the most recent one after March 1st of this year, and use that to calculate the three-month allotment. And so say their utility bills for March are roughly $1,000, so they would be eligible to receive $3,000. Plus, if they're applying for mortgage or rent assistance, they would lump that into. And at this time, the process is we send them a check, and in the terms and conditions that they are getting as the award that they sign off on, they pledge to use the dollars for mortgage assistance or rent assistance and their utility assistance. So the idea is to put the oneness on the recipient. However, we have talked about other options if need be.
Also, thank you, Jay, for that clarification. Also, I'd like to push for funding to go to the small businesses. I absolutely feel under 50 employees, possibly even under that, just because the larger businesses do have opportunities through other means. They're usually more sophisticated and have those banking relationships. And that's, Maya had brought up, a lot of the minority-owned businesses, they don't have the banking relationships to get the PPP or the credit union, whatever. A lot of those opportunities available through federal funding are based on relationships with those financial institutions. If you do not have no relationship with them, you are not in the queue or at the bottom of the queue to receive funding. So if we're not going to wait for minority, women-owned businesses and such like that, I would at least like to have it on the application for tracking, and look at an opportunity even through CDGB to provide some micro lending to minority businesses. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to touch on that point if I could.
Sure, Jeremy.
I want to be absolutely clear. You can go to Notre Dame FCU and apply for the PPP with no business relationship, nothing. I've had multiple businesses that have applied there, and you'll receive PPP funding within five days, as long as you can provide all the documentation that they require.
Okay, I know I was on a conference- Okay, I, I know I was on a conference call with the National Mayor's Group a few days ago, and they were talking about this topic. And a lot of these businesses that are, the phrase they were using is underbanked. You know, they don't have relationships with large lending institutions. They bank with credit unions or other organizations. My understanding is that PPP only works with FDIC insured lending institutions and that credit unions are not FDIC. They are, you know, a different type of, of insurance. So I, I, I'm a little fuzzy on whether or not credit unions can process PPP loans or if the, the assistance that they provide is, you know, a different type of an SBA product. But, so yeah, I, I think that, that's a good referral and people ought to follow up on that. But there might be a, a technical explanation for that situation. I have a, a couple of questions as well. I, I just wanted, again, thanks, staff. I know that, that this has been a round the clock, you know, all hands on deck effort to get this program to where it is. And I, I want to acknowledge that and thank Jay and Chris and everyone that's been involved to get this, this presentation to us. Over the last week or two, as I, I know staff has been fleshing this out. I know we, we were talking about whether or not we put a, a, a cap on the size of the business, whether it ought to be 50 or smaller or 100 or smaller. I know the statistics that you shared with us earlier. There, you know, I, I think there was 11,500 businesses in the city that were 50 or smaller. And the one, the, the, jumping up to the 100 was only another 300 businesses, 11,800. So it doesn't seem like there's really much of a gap between placing a limitation on 50 versus 100. And then I, did I miss, is there a cap for this program on the side, the number of employees that a business has?
Mayor and council, at this time, there's not a cap. We have, we have designed a draft of a decision matrix that, that may include the size of the, the company by employee number. So if you are a business of, you know, 20 or less, you might be scored a little bit higher than a company that has 400 people. But we have not, we have not finalized that. And not knowing what, what the demand will be, it, it is hard to say.
Yeah. Mayor, I think instead of, in these discussions we've just had with the council, and we appreciate it, maybe that's what we don't, we won't create a, we'll send the application out to every business, but we're going to say, if you've already received PPE or you're a publicly traded company, what was that? I'm missing one. That, that would eliminate you from the application process or you would identify that and then we might make the decision that those would not be eligible. So we believe, as to your point, we can keep it open to almost all the businesses, but then put those other conditions in there. And that should probably bring us down pretty close under that to, you know, it allows businesses, even if they're just over 100, to still be able to apply. And if they're a locally-based business or they're not a publicly traded business and they're, don't have PPE and they're seasonal, they would be able to apply. So we wanted, because we recognize some of our bigger employers, maybe larger utility users. And we certainly, if we can provide a benefit to them to make payment on their utilities and also help them with technical assistance, we think that's a good idea.
Okay, so I, I understand there's a, a decision matrix that you've described. So that, that implies to me that this, that there's still some subjectivity here. And this is a loan application that will be under review by city staff and will, will take the information and then will make a decision as to whether or not we're funding this applicant or not based on the information that's provided. It, it's not just, you know, if you check these boxes, a, a check will be in the mail to you ASAP.
No, and I think, like we said, we're going to take all the applications and see what the demand is and most likely create tiers of benefit for each group. I mean, if you're, if you're a business with over 100 employees and you have, you know, 50,000 square feet of space and your utilities that are a certain amount, it may be materially different than a business that's under 50 or under 10. But the benefit of provide, we can, we want to be, make it meaningful for both groups, but we're going to try to simplify the, what the amount could be. But yes, we still have to go through a lot of applications and figure out what the breakdown is. And we'll bring that back to council quickly to kind of show you our justification for that before we would send out the checks.
Okay, I, I know that subject, you know, case-by-case analysis is, takes time and it's, you know, there, there'll be allegations of discretion was exercised poorly. I'm not sure that there's a better way to do that. Because as we, it's difficult right now to predict the, the demand for this project. I mean, we, we could have a healthcare dot gov situation on our hands where we're overwhelmed, you know, and the, the requests far outstrip the resources or not. So I think we need to kind of, as you say, fly this airplane for a little while, see how many passengers we've got before we decide how much we're going to allocate to this program and how, maybe what the final awards are going to, are going to be. I like the, the, the commitment that I've heard to working with third parties in terms of outreach. I've heard from the Asian Chamber, I've heard from the Hispanic Chamber, I've heard from really everyone that I think is anxious for the word to get out to all corners of our community for this program. I am, though, a little leery of using a third party to administer the program. A lot of times when we work with third parties, it's because they have expertise that we don't have. And when we're dealing with HUD programs or, you know, sometimes the problems that we encounter is because third parties aren't as sophisticated as we hoped that they would have been and, and we, and the rules are not followed. In this program, this, this is a program of our creation, I think, as far as the intricacies of it go. So I'm not sure that bringing, that, that there's a, the need to bring in a third, a third-party expertise in this situation, particularly when we have the, we're the writers of the rules, we're the folks with the, with the workforce that's ready to, to get going. I, I, the timeline that Jay described, you know, literally, you know, days or a week or so after the deadline to, to make decisions, I don't know that a third party could improve on that process. So I'm, I'm a little skeptical of the need to bring in a third-party administrator, although working with third parties to, to get, to do the outreach, I think, is, is essential. I, I think a lot of the questions from my colleagues have rotated around just the integrity of this program, the accountability, you know, trying to look for, for opportunities for abuse. And I endorse all of those. The more of those safeguards that we can build into this, the better. I, I wonder if we ought not to have a cap on the amount of the award so that we don't have a headline, you know, a, a year from now where, where somebody who really, or a business that really wasn't that deserving received a disturbingly large amount of money. So maybe a, a cap or maybe, actually, I, I endorse the, I, I don't see a reason for a publicly traded business to be involved in this process. Those, that's the definition of, of a very sophisticated, well-financed business. And I don't think that's the target of, of this program. And, you know, maybe a, a lot of the frustrating stories that I've heard from small businesses over the last few weeks are, are businesses that, that have, have applied for the PPP. They've applied for the SBA and they are just on a, you know, a, a, a gerbil, you know, treadmill. And they're getting every now and then emails from their lending institutions telling them that they have a place in the line, but it's just very frustrating. And, and particularly for the smaller ones, I, I don't know that that situation's going to change anytime soon. So I, I, I understand that, that we don't want to double fund folks. You know, you, we don't want you to be able to collect your, your utilities and your rent from both the federal government and from the City of Mesa. That's abuse. But at some point, I think we're going to have to, to either have a cutoff or the, the idea of going back and flying back some of these dollars seems very problematic to me. I wonder if, if we, if we write the checks, you know, directly to the creditors, to the utility provider or to the mortgage company or, you know, find another way to, to build in some safeguards so that we are avoiding double payment of, of some of these expenses that people are, are coming and petitioning for. So I, I'll leave that up to, to staff to maybe continue to work on trying to find safeguards to avoid abuse and improve accountability on the program. But again, I, I appreciate the, I, I endorse the, the urgency of this. I think the first statistic that you shared with us is that of those businesses that were surveyed, over 70% indicated that they are, that COVID has impacted, impacted them significantly or that they are, you know, at extreme risk of going out of business. So again, the time is of the essence. In this situation, assistance delayed is assistance denied. We'll be doing, you know, obituaries on these businesses if we make this process too long and too cumbersome. So I, I appreciate the sense of urgency that I feel on, on, in this presentation and want to underline that as well.
And Mayor, I, I will say, I appreciate that comment. And I think Councilmember Duff brought up a good point. We, we need to look to see if we can push this out faster than July 1. And we're, we're committed to doing what we can to do that sooner. So we, I was, a point well taken and we've noted it. And we'll see what we can do to push this along as fast as possible.
Okay, thank you. At, at some point, council, we need to move forward with a motion directing staff to proceed. Mr. Luna, and I know, I still see some, some additional hands. I'm not trying to necessarily cut off a discussion, but just want to make that observation. Let's go with Mr. Luna first.
No, Mayor, I was going to support the motions and move forward with the plan that economic development has put in place.
Okay.
Give me a second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Jen, do you want to add anything before we have that vote?
Yes, I just wanted to request that we're able to see what the matrix is at some point before it goes out, just so that we're aware and also will help us with our communication with the community. But I'm in support of moving forward.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Counsel, any additional discussion? All right, there's been a motion and a second that we proceed with, with staff's recommendation on this program. We'll have a roll call vote. I vote aye. Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Whitaker?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Heredia?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Duff?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Luna?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Thompson?
Aye.
Thank you. That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jay, and to Mr. Brady, compliments to you and your staff for, for bringing this well-thought-through program. Although we all see there's, there's still, we are still flying this airplane while we're building it, but thank you. The next item on our agenda, I believe it's item number three, acknowledge receipt of minutes of various boards and committees. Counsel, is there, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Brady, did I skip something on our, I did, item 2D?
I think Councilmember Thompson has something to ask about that.
I'm sorry.
Mayor, I was going to ask if we could, if we could table that agenda item to Monday. We've been going for about two and a half hours now. I imagine a budget's going to go a little bit further. So I would, I would like if my colleagues agree, it would be to table the discussion until Monday.
Okay, certainly, the item of the budget is not something we want to rush. So I, I, I would be supportive of that as well.
Mayor, just a comment, just observation, that's, we're fine with that. What means we'll probably want to meet a little bit earlier on for a study session on Monday. The, the, it is posted as an item for the proposed budget on Monday before you take action on now. What we're telling you is, all we've done is pretty much rolled over this year's budget with the items that have been added, mostly related to public safety because of the additional dollars that have come to them through the sales tax. But I also want to caution you, all we're doing is pretty, creating a placeholder on the proposed budget. We, we're pretty confident that will not be the budget through the, through the year. What we want to do is approve a budget and then we want to set up opportunities to come to council. As you'll see, based on our forecast, we think we need to keep back, come back to council as we get more information about the impact of this pandemic on our economics, that we need to come back probably every three or four months with continued adjustments. We're already making, asking departments to make plans for adjustments during the year, just because we, it is very, very difficult for us to make assumptions about the impact of this. But for the purposes of meeting our charter requirements, we have to approve a budget here in the next 30, 45 days. And so we need to at least do that on Monday. But, but what we're saying to you is, we're most likely, we want to keep coming to council as we look and understand better about the impacts of the budget, what's happening in the budget economically and making those adjustments during the year. So that's, just kind of put it all in the bundle there. But that, yes, we can do this on Monday and begin the conversations of the budget going forward through the next year.
Thank you. And again, just to, to reiterate what you said, per our charter, this is more of a technicality than it is actually discussing what the detailed budget is going to be.
Yes, Mayor, state statute, I stand corrected. It was state, state statute requires us to make this, put this on the agenda for Monday. Sorry.
Yeah, so, so there will be many hours of discussion of what the details of the budget are going to be. But we don't need to accomplish that before our meeting Monday. We just need to have it on the agenda that we're going forward with adopting a budget, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, Mr. Thompson, I like your suggestion that we, and also I'll, I'll point out what we just discussed earlier. Our, our agenda for Monday is really very light. There's nothing off of the consent agenda at this time. So it would make sense to maybe shift this to Monday as well. All right, counsel, without objection, then, we'll, we'll continue Agenda Item 2D to our study session for Monday afternoon. Okay? Thank you. The next item on our agenda then is Item 3, to acknowledge receipt of minutes of various boards and committees. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you, Mr. Freeman, seconded by Mr. Luna. We will do a roll call vote. I vote aye. Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Whitaker?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Heredia?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Duff?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Luna?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Thompson?
Aye.
Thank you. And that was, Jim, that specifically, that was Item 3A, which is the Audit, Finance and Enterprise Committee meeting on March 5. Do we need to have another vote or did that vote take care of that?
That was sufficient, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Agenda Item 4 is current event summary, including meetings and conferences attended. Counsel, I know in spite of the limitations that we're under, that you've all been very active. Let's start with Mr. Luna.
Thank you, Mayor. I've been really busy. I think I'm more busy than I was when we were able to go out. Last, let's see, last Friday, I convened Hispanic elected local officials meeting to the National League of Cities with my board. And really, we centered discussions related to COVID-19 in our communities. And we also gave opportunities to talk about things that were happening within their communities. Saturday, we, I attended the Civil Air Patrol. I was wearing my face mask and I saw that you were there as well. They had an emergency blood drive over at Falco Field Airport. Yesterday, I also convened a HELO meeting with the entire membership, talk about opportunities. We had representatives from the National League of Cities talk about their efforts in trying to secure funding through Congress and through the White House. And then today, at 11:30, I will be convening a meeting. It's called the Business Alliance Webinar alongside my, my good friend Natasha Karachi. We're hosting a meeting with, with Sally Harrison from the Mesa Chamber, Bill, Bill, of course, our friend Bill and Jay from Economic Development. And we're going to talk about latest information and available resources. And we'll hopefully be able to talk about the potential resources available for the City of Mesa. And so we're very excited about that. And I've just been extremely busy. And then this Saturday, we will have a food drive over at the Red Mountain Center from 8:00 AM to noon. And so a lot of, a lot of stuff happening here in District 5 as well as at the national level. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Luna. I know I saw other hands. I'm sorry. Jen, go ahead.
Yes, I'd like to share that on last Friday, I attended a Mesa United Way, Waystep, Dress Up Zoom Party. It was lots of fun and we were able to do some fundraising for the COVID-19. They're putting together another fundraiser, so there'll be more on that coming up. Also, today, this afternoon, with you, Mayor, we are having a digital COVID-19 Downtown Summit with our partners, talking about Downtown Mesa Association, Visit Mesa, and the Arts and Culture Department, talking about things that we're doing to activate downtown. So that's at 12:30 today on Facebook Live. And encourage everybody to watch it and join us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council, other calendar items you'd like to point out? I'll take a moment just to reiterate to something Jen just said, we're doing another digital summit today, the focus is on downtown Mesa. In addition to Councilmember Duff, we'll have representatives from the Downtown Mesa Association and Visit Mesa, talking about some exciting things that are happening and are planned for our downtown during, you know, this COVID experience that we're experiencing. So thank you, Councilmember Duff, for the leadership that you've shown in assisting downtown through this process. I was at a neat event yesterday, I just want to highlight, there was a gentleman at an assisted living facility in East Mesa who was a veteran of Pearl Harbor, and we celebrated his 100th birthday yesterday with a physically distant appropriate classic car parade. It was, I appreciated the invitation to participate in that, but just a, really, a great community outpouring of respect and admiration for this gentleman in our community, and just wanted to highlight that. Mr. Luna pointed out that this Saturday, at the Red Mountain Center, there will be a canned food drive. I'll be participating with Mr. Luna in that event as well, but encourage the entire community this Saturday to join with us in that program. Thank you, Council. Any other agenda items you'd like to highlight before we move on to the calendar? Okay, Mr. Brady, what does our meeting schedule look like going forward?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, as we were just visiting, we will be meeting this coming Monday, probably start a little bit earlier, probably 4:45, 5 o'clock, so we can have the study session to go through the budget and the budget forecast. And then let me just, again, announce what Councilmember Luna mentioned about our Mesa Cares Initiative to collect canned food items, those are the items that we need most right now in our Feeding Mesa program, as we work with our food distribution groups, so, and while we have the first one this, on Saturday, May 2nd, from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM at the Red Mountain Multi-Gen Center, I think the council has seen the schedule, we'll be going throughout the rest of the city, collecting canned goods. We're calling it "You Can Make a Difference" by donating canned food. I don't write these things, I just read them. And so we're encouraging everyone out there who's been out buying lots of canned goods off the shelves, that if you've got some extras now, to be able to bring those to these, and we'll be sharing all the different locations and dates and times that we'll be out there collecting that with our Parks and Recreation staff, again, repurposed for helping collect these cans, and then helping to get those distributed out to those in need. So, thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. That concludes the agenda for this meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Please unmute your microphones, and we'll do a vote of voice, unanimous consent, a vote. All in favor of adjourning this meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, we are adjourned.